Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And good evening, students. At this time, I'd like to call it an open session, the meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees on October 16th at 7:07 PM. I want to thank everyone for coming out to be with us this evening. We'll start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Kavatos in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. And good job Blanton students, I could hear your voice. Y'all did a great job with that. At this time, would you please silence all cell phones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions? If you would, please join me in a moment of silence. Now, we get a wonderful part of the evening, and that includes these fine-looking young men and women in front of me. Our first item on the agenda for the program of presentation is our students' performance tonight by the Blanton Elementary School Drummers. Before they start, let me read a few words about these young men and women. Blanton Choir and Drum Group is a volunteer group that dedicates their time after school on Fridays. The drum stands for Discipline, Respect, and Unity Through Musicianship, and was created in 2009. Blanton was the first elementary school in Arlington to have a drum ensemble. Notable performances include the Levitt Pavilion, a performance to welcome State Representative Diane Patrick, community and school performances. And the director tonight is Ms. Tracy De Los Santos. Ms. De Los Santos, please lead them. Well, Ms. De Los Santos, thank you so much for leading this group.
Thank you.
Young women and men, thank you so much. Congratulations. Y'all are a great representation. You did a great job.
Thank you.
I see lots of junior high choir and band teachers who are ready to get their hands on these young men and women. Yeah. They like the training. They like the singers. To get up and do a solo at that age, that's amazing.
Thank you.
Our next item on the program is our High School Student of the Month. This is a time where as a board, we get to select one student a month to be chosen, to be selected for the entire district, a very distinct honor, and someone who exemplifies what we as a board think is the Student of the Month and to bring forward. So, this month, we have the distinct honor for October 2014 Student of the Month from Arlington Collegiate High School at Tarrant County College Southeast, our brand-new high school that's within the district. Aloysia, correct? Aloysia Perez. Aloysia, please come up and stand for us. Just by saying she's a student at early college high school, you already know she's above and beyond. And then to think about your Student of the Month above and beyond the other students at Arlington Collegiate High School, it says a whole lot. Aloysia, let me say a few words about you, just to brag on you a little more, if that's okay.
It's okay.
Aloysia has already made a positive impact on the Arlington Collegiate High School campus in just the first six weeks. She has embraced the rigor, which it's rigorous, isn't it?
Yes, very.
Yes, good. I like the rigor and challenges presented in both being a freshman in high school and a freshman in college at the same time. Aloysia has plans to complete her bachelor's degree at either the University of Texas at Arlington or TCU, Mr. Hibbs.
Yes.
So that she can either become a nurse or an FBI agent. Maybe both.
Yeah, maybe.
There you go. The staff at Arlington Collegiate High School knows that Aloysia's leadership potential is limitless. One of her teachers said, "Aloysia is very serious about her work. She comes to school with an awesome attitude every day." Another teacher commented, "She's very eager to participate and learn." Aloysia is an outstanding student who shows lion pride on a daily basis. On behalf of the board, let me congratulate you, Aloysia, on being the AISD Board of Trustees Student of the Month. Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd love any words of advice for us, which we always take, and also anyone else you'd like to introduce that's in the audience with you.
No, actually, no. The Collegiate High School was actually a great idea. Gave me opportunity, opportunity that you only get once in a lifetime, so I'm taking advantage of it. It's kind of hard, but you know, you have to pull through. And at this time, I want to represent my family. My Michelle, she's been a mother to me, and my two sisters. They're, like, I've known them all my life, and they're like sisters to me, so, yep.
It's a lot of hard work, but it pays off. It'll pay off in the long run, right?
Yes, it does.
Mr. Ball, any words you'd like to say? Aloysia, you got tears running all over this front crowd up here.
(Laughter) Proud of you.
Thank you.
You started that. She's come through a lot, so we're just glad to have her here, and she exemplifies lion pride. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's a very... Aloysia, we didn't say you could sit down yet. We've still got... (Laughter) Like I said, we only get to recognize one student a month, so we get as much as we can out of it, you know?
Well, I've never had recognition.
Well, you deserve it, just for being chosen and seeing what your teacher said and nomination, you deserved it.
Thank you.
So, at this time, would you please join Dr. Kavatos as we come down and present you a small token? And Aloysia, on behalf of the board, you see, these are board pens that only board members can give out to staff members and students. You can wear this wherever you like. You can put it on your student ID, you can wear it every day on your pen, it can be a fashion accessory, whatever you'd like to wear.
(Laughter)
So be it, so be it. So, it's whatever you'd like. We just like to honor you with this. Here you go. And let's get a couple of pictures.
Thank you.
And congratulations. We look forward in four years celebrating the first graduating class.
I'll be up there.
We know you can. That's a lot of good grunting in the front row there. Those are good ones. Next on our agenda is Community Engage for Excellence Award of Appreciation. Each month, we get the honor to recognize one partner in our district that really helps us a ton, and we know, you know, it talks about taking a village to have a school. It takes a village to run this whole school district and help our schools. So at this time, we have the distinct honor of honoring one of our probably longest givers to this district, and not only givers to the district, but givers to numerous careers that have been with the company of one of my good high school friends with the work in high school, who now runs all the Houston Division down there. It's just amazing. So at this time, we have a distinct honor to honor Spring Creek BBQ and accepting... Chris Carroll's plane has been delayed, so accepting on behalf of Spring Creek is the Director of Marketing, Shelley Combs. Shelley, would you please come up here?
(Applause) Hi, everybody.
And we all know Chris would be here at any chance, so...
Oh, he is just devastated that his plane got delayed. I'm so...
That's...
He's bummed. I'm sorry, guys.
That's what occurs. We were supposed to do this a second, and so we had to change our meeting.
Weather, Texas weather, what do you do?
So Shelley, let me read a few words about Spring Creek and what they've done for us with the partnership. Spring Creek BBQ has been a longstanding member of the community that directly supports the students and staff at the AISD. In partnering with our elementary schools, Spring Creek BBQ sponsors School Spirit Night, where an elementary can receive 20% of gross profits from an evening's dinner service. This event helps to engage the school community and even incorporates the school's teachers to help pass out bread during the event. It's good labor.
Hey, a lot of them were ex-bread girls.
(Laughter) That is very true. That's very true. Spring Creek BBQ annually supports our high schools by purchasing ads and various programs to support team club or initiative. In recognizing excellence in the classroom, Spring Creek BBQ awards their student employees with a monetary incentive for each A and B that is earned on their school report card, and allows flexible scheduling so students can work and maintain their school responsibilities. In recognizing our AIS educational staff, Spring Creek BBQ provides $10 teacher certificates so teachers can enjoy a meal at their restaurant. Spring Creek has recognized our teachers in this fashion for 20 years. With their commitment to students and staff, Spring Creek BBQ truly engages our community. And this is just one page of many we could have written for all the students that have worked at your organization, every group that comes in and asks for anything from y'all, and you usually find a way...
Yes.
...to do it. It's truly amazing, and not only amazing that you do it, but the length you've done it, and how long you've been a commitment, since I was in school, since Mr. Baron first started teaching, since anyone sent their kids through, everyone always knew Spring Creek was a great thing. And you've served the community well, and we can't thank you enough with that, Shelley. So Shelley, at this time, we'd love for you a few words and...
Yes, I would love to say a little something.
Always.
You know, Chris and Becky Carroll are truly just two of the greatest people you will ever know, and they were both teachers, and that's why we just support, support, support any kind of school district, all the districts that we're in, even some that we're not. And with our now Spirit Night program that's been going on six years and going strong, I think we've got almost every elementary school in Arlington AISD partnering with us. We are just in the community and loving it, and we are thrilled, thrilled that you are honoring us today. Thank you so much, and we look forward to many more years. Here's to the next 20, right?
Yeah. Why stop at 20, Shelley?
Right.
We like to go a long way, so...
Right? So, thank you guys so much for recognizing us this evening.
Perfect. At this time, Shelley, if you would, please stand there. Dr. Kavatos would like to recognize you.
Yes.
Hang that in your main restaurant. We know it's one of many restaurants, but...
Right.
And also Shelley, we have a pen for you to recognize the Director of Marketing.
Thank you.
And also for Mr. Carroll, please give that to Chris, that we're aware and telling one of our students is going to wear it in pajamas, so he can wear it wherever in line he orders. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley.
Thank you.
It made me start craving barbecue. I don't know. You talk about Spring Creek BBQ, and I start thinking of the roles they have. Next, we have our special recognition that kind of popped up on the agenda. For one, what caused this meeting to be moved from the second to tonight, the 16th, is our recognition of employees for extra service following the storms. Dr. Kavatos?
Thank you, President Hogg, and this evening, we'd like to take just a minute to recognize some employees that helped us through the storm and getting school back. And I know that the work that is done behind the scenes is often not appreciated enough, and so we want to take this time to acknowledge the hard work of some staff members that really put in extra time and made a commitment to bring our schools back in terms of ready for students. So I'd like Cindy Powell, our CFO, to describe a little bit of what we went through. I think everybody understands from a weather perspective, but in terms of the staff, and Cindy?
Absolutely. As we all know, the evening or the afternoon of October 2nd, we had quite a storm blow through Arlington. We caught the brunt of it, I believe. We lost power to approximately 30 buildings that afternoon, and including the administration building, so we had to cancel the board meeting that evening. Beginning at about 5 o'clock that afternoon, and throughout the weekend until about 6 o'clock on Sunday evening, when we finally got the last of our buildings back up, our auxiliary forces worked tirelessly, literally around the clock. We had our grounds workers, custodians, and general maintenance guys working, and ladies, working to clear driveways, parking lots, sidewalks, playgrounds of the debris. We had very little, minimal damage to any of our buildings, just a lot of debris to clean up. So they worked on that. We also had our electricians and HVAC mechanics working around the clock to reset HVAC systems and controls, and electrical systems, and alarm systems. Our security guys helped with that piece of it. In food service, we had a very interesting experience because we have freezers at all of our schools that house the inventory for our cafeterias, for our kitchens, and so if we had just let that food sit, we would have incurred a big financial loss from that. And so our food service staff worked overnight, all night into the day, the next day on Friday, going to these schools in the dark. So they have to enter a dark school, and then get into the freezers, and pack up the food in the freezers, load it on trucks, and bring it back to our food service warehouse, unload it there, and put it in the freezers in our central warehouse. We even had four bus drivers who, I don't think they understood what they were getting into, but they volunteered. I called Tim Collins, the interim director of transportation, and I said, "Tim, do you have anybody who can help?" And he did, and they were still at work, and they had shorts on. And so they were going into these freezers all night long. And so they were troopers about it, and they saved us a significant amount of money because we did not lose that food. We are extremely grateful to every one of them, and Dr. Kavatos is right, whether it's an icy day and they're out putting out, you know, stuff on the sidewalks to help, and clearing sidewalks so that we can all get from the parking lots into the buildings safely, or whether they're cleaning up after a mess like we had Friday, they do tremendous work, and I am so proud to work with them and watch their service and see how other people react to that. And so we thought that very appropriate to recognize them this evening, and we have a number of them here. What I'd like to do, and I'm not sure I have all of them, but I want to call the names of the supervisors and the management group that is here this evening, and have them stand, and then we'll have all their staff members stand too. So Jennifer Duplessis, I believe, is here in the back. She spearheaded the maintenance effort to clean up. Jackie Anderson and Mary Ellen R. are here from Food Service. They personally were up all night hauling food out of the freezers, and so we appreciate that. Jeff Thomas from Operations is here. James Smith, Chris Gent, Mike Nunley from Security. And we also have David Guillory, Terry Rogers, I've seen. I don't believe Tim Collins could be with us this evening. I think...
He's back.
Oh, he is? Okay, he did come. Thank you. Wasn't sure he would be here. And Richard Longre, also. And I think we have several other supervisors here. So if, and David Guillory, I see. If all the supervisors first would stand up, they had to organize the effort, and so that's quite a chore, and they themselves, yeah. And then I'd like to ask all their staff members who are here to please stand and let us acknowledge their efforts. We can't open our schools without these folks.
Yeah, that's right.
We can't feed our kids without these folks, and we can't get them to and from school without them. And so we are very appreciative of their work on behalf of us and all 65,000 of our kids, so thank you all very much.
Yeah, hold on. We'll talk in a second. I'll get us to standing. What's that, yours?
President Hogg, and just to reiterate a little bit, you know, we often say that it takes all of us in this school system. We have 8,000 employees, and it takes all of us to make sure students are successful. And tonight, we acknowledge your work that you've done over this past storm effort and things like that, because it does take all of us. And oftentimes, you know, we just come back to school, basically, and we open our doors and things like that, but somebody has to get it ready, and somebody has to make sure that the students are taken care of, and the staff is taken care of as well. So really appreciate your efforts and your continued dedication to not only Arlington ISD, but more importantly, to our students.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Kavatos. And on behalf of the board, let me just say a few words. Sometimes, all these folks that spent all night working on this, and we're recognizing you for all night, but honestly, it's for everything else you do for the whole year. You're our unsung heroes. You know, when people think of schools, the first thing they think about is our teachers, which of course, but it takes everyone in this group to keep it working, and every single person out there has a dedication, because it was about getting the schools up and running because we knew the kids needed to be back in school. And it couldn't be done, and we couldn't have opened, and we canceled the day after, and I remember driving around that evening because I was worried about damage at some properties, and I see staff at all of them. I see you guys out working at so many of them, and I didn't even know you went throughout the whole night doing that, but that doesn't surprise me. And on behalf of the board and the entire district, I can't thank you enough for your countless dedication, specifically on October 2nd, but for the rest of the year. It's very, very, very much appreciated, and we kind of talked about, there's no way to recognize you enough for the amount of work you do. We're going to say a huge thank you for that and know that you're very much appreciated. At this time, would everyone, please join me in a nice round of applause for this group. I must also take just a second, Dr. Kavatos. As some of us had already made it up here for the board meeting that evening, that was one of the roughest storms I've seen blow through in a very short period of time. We were up here, power went out, and saw immediately, I must thank our superintendent and our senior staff for immediately going into action. We kind of joked that other people got the night off and schools canceled the next day. Well, not for you guys. You were constantly working the whole next day, as long as this whole group, to make sure everything was getting in order, because we knew we had to be up and running. And Dr. Kavatos, I must thank you and your senior staff, because I was here to witness and watch the quick action, quick maneuvering, safety first always, number-one concern over anything, but then what do we do to get to the next steps of what we need to do in this time? And it was dark up here. It was dark and windy. I thought this building was blowing down, so it was, but I must thank you and your staff for setting the precedence, and all the employees that followed. Thank you for your hard work on that. At this time, if y'all, some of y'all need to scoot out. We are going to do two recognitions, and then we'll have a little break, so you'll be able to, y'all can sneak out. Y'all have worked hard enough. (Laughter) You don't need to stay. Sorry, Dr. Wertz. They're going to watch it online. No, they're not. They worked all night a couple of weeks ago. We got a... At this time, we'll move to appointments. Dr. Kavatos?
Thank you, President Hogg, and I'd like to recommend that the board ratify the individual discussed in closed session for Chief Academic Officer, and appoint the individual discussed in closed session for Executive Director of Accountability, Planning, and Testing.
At this time, do we have a motion?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Payne, and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees, present six trustees voting affirmative. Dr. Reich is out sick this evening. Dr. Kavatos, please introduce.
Thank you, President Hogg, and it's my pleasure to present to you the new Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Stephen Wertz. Dr. Wertz attended Brigham Young University in Utah and obtained his Bachelor of Science in Spanish, Bachelor of Arts, I'm sorry, in Spanish, University of Texas at Arlington for his Master of Education in Ed Leadership, and Dallas Baptist University for his Doctor of Education in Ed Leadership. Most recently, our Area Superintendent for Elementary, has worked as a Division Director over elementary schools, and has been a principal at several schools, and an assistant principal, and a fourth and fifth grade bilingual teacher, and a first through fifth grade bilingual ESL teacher. Dr. Wertz, congratulations. Anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
Yes, thank you so much. I first want to, President Hogg, the school board, Dr. Kavatos, I want to first express my gratitude for having the opportunity to serve on a really dynamic team. I feel honored to be here because Arlington ISD truly focuses on students. We sit through multiple staff meetings, working with principals and students, and the focus is always on kids, and that's something unique, I think. I've said this many times, I believe we're in a unique time here in the history of Arlington ISD. Through our strategic plan, we're centering our work on providing students with access to not only acquire skills, but to help them prepare for the futures of their choice, and to give them learning experiences that cultivate their imagination and help them to think and consider possibilities that they may not necessarily be thinking of previously. And I look forward to collaborating with you, with the superintendent, with the senior staff, with the campus leadership, the teachers, the community members, and most importantly, with the students, as we design programming that will tap into their interests and challenge their thinking, foster their collaboration, also prepare them to graduate and to persist successfully in the career or the education path of their choice. I want to acknowledge my family. They jinx me on this one.
(Laughter) It's all right, Dr. Wertz. It's worth it.
My beautiful wife, Christina, she's been a real support to me. You know, if you do this job and you try to do it well, they sacrifice your time at home, so I appreciate the time that she gives to me and the support she gives to me at home, and I love her very much. These are my three children. This is Tanner, my son, my daughter Olivia, and my youngest daughter Sophia, and they're the light of our life. And I also want to acknowledge my friends and family who are watching on the internet. I've always felt very supported in my professional and my learning opportunities growing up and as an adult, and my desire is to extend that same opportunity to students that we serve, to all the academic departments. I look forward to collaborating with each of you, and I appreciate the value that they bring to our organization, and I thank you all again for this unique opportunity. I promise to work hard, and I'm ready to get started, so thank you.
I love, I love how you said "get started," I know.
I'm sure he's already started.
Our concern was, can we ratify it? Because it was...
That's right. He's already started. Next, I'd like to introduce the new Executive Director of Accountability, Planning, and Testing, Mr. Kevin Bartle. And Kevin attended the University of Merit... And Kevin attended the University of Mary, of Mary Harden and Baylor and obtained his Bachelor of Science in Applied Mathematics. Charlton State University for his Master of Science in Mathematics. And just recently defended, so he's now Dr. Barlow. So, congratulations on that. And most recently, the executive director of institutional effectiveness at University of Houston Clear Lake, has been the executive director of research and accountability in Clear Creek ISD, the director of accountability in Georgetown ISD, has taught math at the high school level and has also taught driver's education, is what it says here. So, Dr. Barlow, you have a lot of experience. So, congratulations, Kevin, and welcome. Anything you'd like to say?
Thank you. Wow, I'd forgotten about the driver's ed. It's been, been years ago. So, thank you.
Earned its stripes.
Thank you. Good evening, President Hogg, board members, and Dr. Kavasos. I just want to thank you so much for this opportunity to serve the students, parents, and educators in Arlington ISD. From my conversations throughout the interview process, I believe Arlington ISD is a fantastic district with strong leadership and a strategic plan that's going to lead to great things in the near future. My hope is that my expertise in, in planning accountability and testing will be able to add to those endeavors, being an asset to that. As an educator, student success is at the forefront of my educational philosophy. And I'm excited to be joining a district which seems to have a similar philosophy of student success. My lovely wife, Glenn, extends her apologies, as she had a previous engagement, was not able to be here tonight. Again, thank you. And I look forward to this great opportunity.
I'd also like to take a moment to thank Kathy Link, Dr. Link, for being the interim executive director. Kathy, would you stand up? Thank you, Kathy. Appreciate your service.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Vassos. Congratulations, Dr. Barlow and Dr. Wertz. There's a lot of doctors around here. As is our custom, we'd ask you guys to please follow Mr. Cale out to the lobby for receiving lines, so we meet you and welcome you. If we would let the board go first, and we appreciate, we'll be back at approximately 7:50. Thank you. Call is being back to order at 7:51 PM. We have no public hearing, so now we come to open forum for agenda items. It's a routine part of the school board's agenda, regularly scheduled meetings, a segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with trustees on items that are on the agenda. It's not intended to be a discussion or debate, and trustees will not reply to the speakers. Director comments, individual will not be tolerated, personal matters are not appropriate, subjects to open the forum. I have one card from our audience. When we call your name, Ms. Levy, please come up, step to the podium. You'll have five minutes, a latter timer on the podium. We'll assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on, buzzers sound, please end your presentation. Not that you're not used to all the standards of where it is. So, our first, our first and only speaker this evening is Ms. Jessica Levy from United Educators Association, speaking on district and campus improvement plans and paperwork reduction. Good evening, Ms. Levy.
Good evening, President Hogg, members of the board, Dr. Kavasos. I'm here tonight representing over 4,000 employees and voting constituents of UEA. First, I want to congratulate you all on being named the TSTA's 2014 Outstanding Board, and what a great honor that is to be chosen and recognized for your dedication to our students. But the purpose for me addressing you tonight is twofold. And we again want to make you aware of the crushing burden that has been placed upon your teachers, especially your elementary school teachers, and to highlight pertinent laws that could help. Tonight, you're moving to approve district and campus improvement plans. Those plans will have bold and innovative ideas, but we ask that you make sure teachers are not buried with new paperwork demands. Reviewing paperwork reduction policy, you'll see that districts must limit redundant requests for information and the number and length of written reports that a classroom teacher is required to prepare. The reports that teachers are required to prepare are limited to a specific list that essentially covers grading, lesson plans, attendance reports, reports related to health or safety of students, and the accreditation information or material related to a grievance or other legal matter. By this definition, our teachers are already being asked to submit redundant paperwork. Some of this paperwork is electronic. It can be found on Polaris and then duplicated again on Google Documents, on dashboards, data dashboards, DRA data, TPRI, and then PLC data reports. And then some are traditional forms and paperwork that's not always approved by the board. Policy states that school boards are expected to evaluate paperwork requirements and transfer any reporting tasks that could be reasonably accomplished to non-instructional staff. Though the law allows districts to collect other essential information, it requires the agreement of the teacher in such situations. Our teachers are not being asked, they are being told. Told that they must comply or they'll receive a write-up for each instance, starting a paper trail of insubordination. We personally know of one employee that was told he would lose his job. We also know that such bullying is not the intent of administration, but their message is not being clearly communicated to the principals or teachers. We would like to help you with this process. Elementary teachers and principals are at a breaking point. Teachers want to teach students. We want to follow your vision you've laid out for us in the strategic plan. We want to incorporate more technology and engage students with new learning strategies. But instead of preparing this 21st century lessons, they are too busy filling out redundant data spreadsheets, writing time-intensive lesson plans, and justifying their absences. Instead, their actual classroom preparation is done at the expense of their family and their physical and mental health. It is not uncommon to see elementary school teachers leaving campus as late as 9:00 and 10:00 PM every night. Principals know their teachers are suffering. They know their teachers are at a breaking point. But when they're asking for help, they're not getting a response. The added workload is not slowing and now our principals are breaking. We ask that while voting to approve the district and campus improvement plans, that you please request a review of paperwork requirements at our campuses. We ask that you lift the great burden that's placed on our elementary school teachers. Please help us realize your vision for this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Ms. Levy. At this time, we'll move to action items. First up is consider approval to hold open forums on school boundary process. Dr. Kavasos?
Thank you, President Hogg. And as part of our bond implementation and the repurposing of two schools for dual-language fine arts academies, it has boundary implications for incoming kinder students. And so, Mr. Hill has been working with a committee. And tonight, we're asking for approval to hold some open forums. And Mr. Hill will review the process. Michael?
Thank you to President Hogg, board members, and Dr. Kavasos. Just a brief presentation on a request to hold open forums at selected campuses, as previously mentioned, regarding boundary changes. So, again, tonight, we're seeking that permission to hold open forums to get more input from the community and, and explain to the community the entire process, dealing with 2015-16 incoming Corey Elementary students impacting Moore and Wood Elementaries, as well as a new location at Timber Oaks, which will impact Anderson, Crouch, Remensy, Roark, Thornton, and Knox Elementaries. Just a brief timeline. We've had the initial presentation to the board. We've identified and selected committee members from the impacted campuses. That committee has met and reviewed some preliminary boundaries with the help of Templeton demographics as an external resource. We did that, we're here tonight again to seek permission to hold those open forums. And we have prepared, pending approval tonight, letters to send home to parents to explain the dates of the open forums and to give them a copy of the map, which we will review here shortly. And again, November, I'm sorry, October 21st through October 30th, we are planning to have open forums at the selected campuses. Pending all of that, we'll be back on November 3rd as a committee to finalize it and bring it back to the board for approval on November 6th. On November 7th, the plan is to send those letters out along with the maps to every student in the impacted schools, letting those parents and families know what the boundaries are for the 14, sorry, for the 15-16 school year. Community forum dates, we've kind of met with the principals and the committee to come up with these dates and locations. And so, at Corey Elementary, we'll hold that on October 30th. Moore Elementary, October 21st. Wood, October 27th. Anderson, Crouch, and Thornton, again, on October 29th. At those times, the Anderson, Crouch, and Thornton, those principals and that committee felt that it would be best to combine at one of those schools and give parents multiple opportunities throughout the day to attend. And so, that was, that came from a recommendation from the, from the committee. As you'll see, here are the current Timber Oaks boundaries. And you will be able to see a better picture on the handout that you have. But in essence, what we have is, this is Crouch Elementary right here. Here's Highway 360. We have several students that are on the east side of 360 that are being bused across 360 right now into Roark and Thornton Elementaries. The next slide, you will see the new boundaries. And again, what the desire was, was to relieve some overcrowding in the East Arlington Elementaries by building the new elementary right here on Timber Oaks. And all those students that were bused across 360, if you'll see right here at the blue, on the east side of 360, they're going to Roark. The new attendance zones would bring those students back over, so we wouldn't have to cross over 360 and then relieve some of the overcrowding in the other East Arlington Elementary schools. That's just one example there. Projected enrollment versus current enrollment. Crouch right now is sitting at 1,085. After new boundaries, it'll take it down to roughly 899. Anderson's sitting at 836. The new boundaries would take it down to 635. Again, Timber Oaks, right now, it's no students there, because it's not open. We're projecting the enrollment there to be 787. Knox at 713 with projected enrollment of 639. Remensy, 624 down to 599. Thornton, 954 down to 895. And Roar, sitting at 676 now would be reduced down to 498, right at 500 students. The current boundaries at Corey, Wood, and Moore are identified here. One of the things that, when we looked at redrawing these boundaries, the students who are currently at Corey Elementary would remain at Corey. And incoming kinder students, the boundary that you'll see on the next slide will have an impact on the incoming kinder students at Corey. And so, Corey would be phased out over a period of roughly six years to get that done. And so, what, what the demographers did and the committee agreed on upon this one was using Green Oaks Avenue, I'm sorry, as, as the divider. Anything north or on the inside of Green Oaks would be zoned to Wood Elementary. And then on the outside here, south of Green Oaks, would, would go down to Moore Elementary. Again, those are impacting incoming kinder students who are, who would be going into Corey naturally, but they would be rezoned to those schools. Corey, right now, is sitting at 610. And the projection there, it'd be 487, plus the dual-language fine arts academy. And we haven't really nailed down how many students would be in that academy yet. Moore would be at 664. Right now, we would project them next year, 623, plus the kinder students that would normally come from Corey. And so, how do we get 38? We looked at a five-year average for the kinder classes that come into Corey. And that five-year average has been at 77. We took roughly half of that, and that's how we got that number. Wood is sitting at 717 right now. They would be 639, plus that, that 38 students, if that class were to remain the same, that would be coming from Corey. That's the process that administration recommends with regard to open forums. And I would take any questions that you have at this point.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hill. Mr. Barron?
Thank you, President Hogg. Ms. Hill, could you go back to the one that's projected enrollment?
Yes, this one for Corey, Wood, Moore, or?
The bigger one, that one.
Okay.
If, if this comes back, could we see another column that says capacity?
Capacity. Capacity, sure.
So, we can see how close to being at capacity these schools will be after the fix takes place?
Yes.
Okay. And for these areas, is this the fix? Or are we going to be looking at rezoning in a couple of years again?
What our demographers, they're trying to project out, and we think that this, this would be, this would be able to handle the enrollment projections in that area.
And the same question for, for both areas, right?
That's correct. Actually, what, what the demographers, demographers, demographers are showing is that in the Wood, Corey, Moore area, there's a projected decline in student enrollment in that, in that area. And so, we feel like it, it may seem like a little tight for this, from the start, but, but that enrollment in that area is projected to, to kind of decrease.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hibs?
Mr. Hill, this may be too early even to discuss, but with these three schools, we'll be obviously adding that new cohort of kindergartners. And then Corey itself, the other students will be moving out over the course of the years. Are we going to pay close attention to transfers this next year, to ensure that we've got the right numbers for any parents that want to move out of Corey, so their children, that may be going into kindergarten, and older students will have space to be able to move over?
Yeah. And so, regarding transfers, generally what happens when we are redrawing boundaries, we close all of those schools to transfers, so that we have kind of let the dust settle a little bit.
Okay, good.
We would consider opportunities where, give families the opportunity to make sure that they have all of their, all of the children in the same school. And so, moving into Corey, if you, if you're a kinder going into Corey and you're accepted into the academy, then we would consider letting an outsider transfer into Corey in those upper grades, if there is capacity there. The same thing with regard to Wood and Moore. If there is capacity, we want to try to provide that opportunity for parents.
Okay, good.
Great question, Mr. Hibs. Ms. Solins?
Thank you, President Hogg. Mr. Hill, thank you very much for, for your presentation this evening. Boundary decisions are never easy ones. And I'm always very glad the comprehensive approach the district takes that includes so many variables and so many people. And I certainly appreciate the community input that you're about to embark on and appreciate your works. But I did have one question, and then I'd like to make a motion. Does capacity include or exclude temporaries?
Capacity is the brick and mortar of the buildings, not, not...
That's my favorite answer. Thank you. That, I'd like to make a motion that the board approved to hold open forums on the school boundary process for 2015-2016 Corey Elementary, incoming kindergarten students impacting Moore and Wood Elementaries, and also Timber Oaks location, Anderson, Crouch, Knox, Remensy, Roark, and Thornton Elementaries.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Solins and a second by Mr. Hibs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting affirmative. Thank you for all your work, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
That's my favorite answer. Thank you. And that, I'd like to make a motion that the board approved to hold open forums on the school boundary process for 2015, 2016 Corey Elementary, incoming kindergarten students impacting Moore and Wood Elementarys, and also Timber Oaks location, Anderson, Crouch, Knox, Remensy, Roark, and Thornton Elementarys.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Solins and a second by Mr. Hibs. Any further discussion?
Mr. Hill, I have one quick question and just point of clarification. This is not to approve boundaries, this is just to hold open forums so we can get input from the parents on this. And I think a point to be made, Mr. Hibs, your question was right on with where it is of certain approvals. I think on any time we're doing boundaries, superintendent and staff always have room to make any kind of approval on any boundary or transfer, because I think that's a perfect example. If your child's accepted into the Fine Arts program at Corey for that K year, and you have a kid that's going to be a fifth grader, they could be in the same group to speak, or vice versa. You're now transferring, your child's going to go to Corey or Wood, and you have a fourth grader and you want them all to be at the same school, those things can always be approved. Ms. Solins? See your button? Yep. Oh, it's from a four. Okay. So, perfect. With that, we have a motion by Ms. Solins and a second by Mr. Hibs. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting affirmative. Thank you for all your work, Mr. Hill.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move to action item B, consider approval of 2014 district and campus improvement plans. Dr. Cavassos.
Thank you, President Hogg. And our campuses have been working on their campus improvement plans with a needs assessment and setting targets and goals the district has as well. And you know, the, the foundation for that is our scorecard, is it cascades for all the other planning and campus planning. And so Dr. Wertz, our chief academic officer, will may have a brief presentation about our campus improvement plan process and district improvement plan process for your consideration.
President Hogg, school board members, Dr. Cavassos, I'm here tonight to share with you our district campus improvement plans and describe a little about the process that we went through to arrive at the place where we are today. So the first thing we did is we tried to work this year to really align each component of our system so that each piece was speaking to the other one. And we spoke about this at the last board meeting where I shared some information about our scorecards and on-track. So what we did as a team is we worked together to identify what we felt were high-leverage targets to be part of our scorecard, areas where we believe that if we can make significant gains, it would impact student achievement across the district. And we created action steps towards actually achieving those targets, and we're in the process right now of designing how we're going to measure those action steps as we go. And we took our on-track report, which is, which has a series of metrics that were designed here in Arlington ISD to consider different factors that impact students' achievement and align those to the scorecard targets that we had developed. And we look at things like grades, attendance, outcomes on state assessments, outcomes on our CAs and academic checks as we're kind of going through the school year. And then once we aligned our on-track report, which is a document that we're going to use to monitor our progress through the year statistically, we worked with our DIDC and members of our different departments to develop the district improvement plan, which has four target goals, and those goals cascaded down to the campus level where campuses were able to identify what their contribution to the goal outcome would be, and then identify specific performance objectives and strategies to align themselves to the target. So I shared this slide with you initially just to give an idea of how we're being very strategic about making sure each component of our system is directly aligned, and so that if you looked at a campus improvement plan, you should see the goals in the campus improvement plan sound just like the DI, the DIP, the district improvement plan, which are the same targets we measure on on-track, and they're the same ones that you'll see on our scorecard. So our district improvement plan consists of four goals. We have our on-track to graduation, so that's increasing the percentage of students that are performing or reaching what we consider the threshold here in Arlington for meeting on-track. We also are looking to have all campuses receive a MET rate, a MET standard rating by the state. We want to increase the mean score of our employee engagement surveys and also increase the mean score of our parent satisfaction surveys. So the, the strategies and performance objectives that you'll see in the sample plans that I'm going to share with you today are directly aligned to those four targets. So in our first goal, which is to increase the number of on-track, the percent of on-track students to graduate, we have two performance objectives. One is the overall on-track for all students K through 12, and we want to increase that by 5% from 43% to 48. And then the performance objective for specifically K2 is 48 to 53. And you'll notice here that we highlighted specifically K2 outside of the overall on-track because we do recognize that that's an area deficiency that we're trying to increase across the district because it is our belief that a strong foundation will build a more successful future for the students as they're matriculating through the school years. Goal two is district and all campuses will meet, receive a MET standard rating. And the MET standard rating, the performance objectives are based on the phase-in standards that the state is creating for us. So right now, we're still in phase one, and we want to increase our first index, which is specifically around the number of students passing the state assessments, all, all kids in all assessments, from 73% to 75. Right now, the state standard is 55, so we're already significantly above what the state's expecting. Performance objective two is to increase our percent from 40 to 42 on index two, which is about student progress, and the state standard currently is at 16% and we're at 40. We would like to increase our index three, which is about closing achievement gaps, from 37 to 39%, and we're at 37, and the state standard right now is 28. And then finally, performance objective four, which is the percentage of students in index four increasing from 65 to 67, which is about college readiness, and that's, the state standard is at 57%, and we're, we're currently at 65, and we want to move to 67. Our goal three is to increase the, the mean score of our employee engagement surveys as we try to engage our employees, and we want to move from 3.76 to 3.86. And goal four is specifically around our parent satisfaction survey, and we want to increase our mean right now from 4.39, which is already pretty high, to 4.44. There are a couple of goals that you may have noticed as you go through the campus improvement plans that are not necessarily part of the original four of the district goals, and that's simply the reason why they're not linked directly into the four is because they, they don't apply to all campuses. So the first one, these are specifically related to advanced academics, and they fall in the secondary, and these targets are part of our scorecard, and that's why they're also included in the campus improvement plans to, to align. So we are working on increasing the participation of students in grades seven through 12 in advanced academics, and that's specifically pre-AP, IBAP, and dual-credit courses, and that's going from 50, 48% to 50. Our performance objective two is to increase the composite percent of juniors meeting college readiness standard on the PSAT, and we want to increase that from 41 to 50. And then our performance objective, the last, the third one around advanced academics is to increase the participation rate of students that are actually taking or participating in certification exams, and we want to move the participation rate from 35 to 50. Just to give you some insight as to the process that we went through at the campus level to develop the campus improvement plans, work sessions were provided with the Department of Accountability, Planning and Testing, and also area superintendents. So principals were invited to come to receive assistance if they needed it. And then the principals would take their plans that they collaboratively developed with their teams back to their site-based decision-making committee, and they would refine those plans to make sure that they were meeting their, their targets and aligned to the actions that they're trying to accomplish at the campus level. Once those planned drafts were completed, they, the area superintendents all reviewed each of the plans, and we had a specific set of criteria that we looked at when reviewing the plans that was consistent across the grade level. And some of the things that we considered was the needs assessment. We looked to see that the goals and objectives that were in the, in the campus improvement plans were aligned to the district's campus improvement plan and other sources that part of our system like scorecard and the on-track. And then we also looked to see that the performance objectives were aligned to meet the campus needs, they were data-based, and that they also addressed the safeguards at each of the campuses that were highlighted from last year's testing season. Once we went through each of the plans, the area superintendents provided feedback to the, to the principals, and then the finalized campus improvement plans were submitted at the end of September, beginning of October, depending upon kind of where the principal was in the completion process, and they're available online on Plan for Learning for your review. This is just a real brief screenshot of, from Plan for Learning, just to kind of highlight what I just mentioned, the four target goals on the district improvement plan that are used as part of the campus improvement plans, and then the additional required campus level specific goals that are not necessarily included in Plan for Learning, the four goals that are related to the advanced academics and the on-track to graduate. We wanted to provide you with some samples of the plans. I know you have access to them and that you've had a chance to read them. This is a, a couple of screenshots from the district improvement plan. I thought I would highlight some sections in there just for, just for information reasons. So here you're going to notice, this is one of the district improvement plans, and one of the, the components about one of our plans is in Plan for Learning is we have formative reviews that take place four times per year. And you'll notice this is an example over here in the evidence that demonstrates success and opportunity for the departments to measure the quality of implementation of the individual strategies. And so when they are reviewing in November and in January, and again in March and June, they can track whether they're making no progress, some progress, if it's not a strategy that's effective, and they need to discontinue it, that kind of thing. This is another example from the district improvement plan, and this is, this gives you, it highlights other components, specifically the strategies here, and then in the bottom, you can see the markers that we use to do our formative reviews. This is an example from one of our elementary campuses, and we wanted to share with you, let me see if I can grab this here. We wanted to share with you some differences that you might see as you're going through the plans. Here in elementary, you're going to see that the goal was to contribute to the, to the district's overall 5% increase from 51 to 56. And in Little, at Little, one of their targets is to increase 90% of the students in Kinder in first and second grade, reaching the, the reading standard on DRA. And that's something you'll see that's unique to elementary because it's, it's wrapped around a, a testing measure that we only measure at the elementary level. This is an example of, of her plan at Little Elementary focused around breaking down writing scores, and you're going to see at the, at the goal level at the top, when it says MET standard, she specifically, the, the campus specifically referred to index one and two, and one of the ways they're going to impact all kids passing the assessments and also progress measure was specifically in writing by increasing the percent passing from 87 to, 77 to 87. And you'll notice in plans that you're going to see very specific student populations highlighted, and that's simply because the effort is to increase academic achievement for all students to make sure everyone has, is achieving at similar levels. This is an example from Young Junior High, and you're going to see the stand, the, the structure is very similar to what we just saw in the elementary. Again, there's a MET standard where she specifically talks about safeguards and indices two and three. I think it's important to note at the campus level, there are four indices that campuses are scored by the state, and principals have the discretion to consider which index, which index at their campus was needing the most amount of growth, and some would choose one or two, and some would choose three. It would just, we let them have that discretion so that they were able to focus their energies around the most high-leverage places at their schools. This is an example of one where the school focused on index two and three, and the sample that we shared with you specifically around social studies in eighth grade and U.S. history, and then the specific targets are related to populations that might be struggling at that campus. This is Seguin Junior, Seguin High School, and I just wanted to share with you some samples for the employee engagement survey as well as the parent satisfaction survey. So here you can see there, this specific campus is working to increase their score from 3.61 to 3.76, and they have specific strategies listed and then evidence to monitor those strategies. And the final one is specifically, this one's around advanced academics, so a sample of one of the advanced academics that you would see that is related specifically to a secondary campus. Questions?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Any questions for colleagues? Ms. Solins.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. This is an outstanding process. I mean, we've come a long way on these, and I know that we, we probably still have a long way to go. I wondered if, when we get the formative reviews in, could we get a notification that those, those reports have been, fields have been populated so we could have a heads-up to go in and take a look?
Yeah, we could definitely do that. And we, our target is always the end of the month, by the last day of the month of that, of the, of the formative review target that's on the Plan for Learning, so we can definitely provide.
Sometimes I'm not sure that that date's the date that, you know, maybe you review them or other people review them, so.
Yeah.
Whenever, whenever you think it's a good, I would, I would, I would appreciate a heads-up anyway.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Do that.
Thank you, Ms. Solins. Mr. Hibs.
Dr. Wertz, I appreciate the data that you put in and, and the work that each one of the campuses have put into these plans, and, you know, plans are as good as the effort that, that now goes forward in trying to promote those. So, you know, I, I have full confidence and trust that at each campus, the principals will be working with the staff and doing everything possible to reach out for those goals. And I know that as area superintendents and such, they look out to not only bring about critique, but also suggestions for success. And, and the first part of this year has been a challenge for six weeks because there's so many new things that are being implemented, and there's a, you know, when you have a lot of implementation, implementation of new programs, you know, things that are being directed by the board through our strategic plan and our efforts, and then also what's mandated through the state test, it can be overwhelming at the campuses. I know that from a board standpoint, from an administration standpoint, we've had conversations and, you know, and we've heard tonight through the speaker earlier that they just ask us to use caution and, and bring in some insight of ensuring that we're not putting any type of duplicate, duplicate, sorry, duplicating any of our efforts. And I know that that conversation is already happening at the administration level, and as we can get that just rolled out to the campuses, I think that it would go a long way because especially when it comes to the employee engagement sample, or surveys that we'll be doing. So I, you know, I, my statement there is just, you know, if there seems to be duplication and some of the different things that we're asking, that would indeed, that we try to find a way to streamline that. And, you know, sometimes it also just needs to be a little bit of, have, making sure that the people at the campus level can have buy-off on it and share, you know, being able to share what the ultimate goal or vision is. And, and I think that there's already been some areas that we've identified where we're putting, we're going to be putting, you know, extra substitute days and such in play. So as we can get that message back through, and we can encourage the campus administrators to, being able to sit down with their staffs and, and walk through this, I think it'll make a, the second six weeks go much smoother. So, but I appreciate the efforts that we're doing. There is a lot that's, that's going out there right now, and that's just difficult to tread through at times.
No. Yeah, thank you for the feedback, and we're actively working on that. Yeah, I, I think that the, our job is to ensure that teachers have the things that they need to do their job well, but our effort is to try not to duplicate efforts much as possible, yeah.
Yeah, and you know, I'll just throw this in there too, because I think it needs to be known by the teachers, is there's great passion by the central administration. I see each one of you trying to say, how do we move this, this needle and do something that's extraordinary in a urban district? Because urban districts struggle just because of the challenges that we have. I don't know that there'd be very many other districts across the country that would have as many different language speakers that's outside of English that we do here in Arlington. I mean, we've got a great Asian population, we've got a great Hispanic population, and so on, and that brings in its own set of challenges. I, I, I have full confidence in our central administration, I have full confidence in our, in our campus administration, and I have no doubt that every morning the teachers are walking in and saying, I want to be able to teach the children. So, you know, if we can just make sure that we're all on that same page and, and everybody's getting that buy-off and seeing the importance, I, I think that'll go a long way.
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Hibs. Any further discussion? This time I take a motion from one of my colleagues.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Pena and a second by Ms. Solins. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees present, six trustees voting affirmative. Thank you for all the work, Dr. Wertz. It's amazing where these improvement plans have come over the last few years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll move to action item C, consider authorization of, with Preakness Place. At this time, we'll take a motion. Ms. Pena, I think you're going to make it for us.
I move to consider authorizing the use of surplus 1999 and surplus 2009 bond funds and authorizing the superintendent to execute the settlement agreement and related documents in connection with AISD versus Preakness Place LLC, cause number 2013-004100-1, and AISD versus Hamilton Cash Investments. versus Hamilton Cash Investments LLC, cause number 2013-006410-2, pending in county court at law number one of Tarrant County, Texas.
Thank you, Ms. Pena. Is there a second?
I'll make a second.
Thank you, Mr. Hibs. This time we have a motion by Ms. Pena, a second by Mr. Hibs. Any discussion that will need to turn from legal? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees, present six trustees, voting affirmative. Thank you. Next, we'll move on to consent items. Ms. Powell. We finally caught her off guard. We moved faster than you thought, didn't we?
Yes, you did. I was taking a nap over there.
You probably deserve it, so I'll tolerate that. Let her get some sleep, everybody. Dr. Kavasos.
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavasos. This evening, it's my pleasure to announce that we have donations for your consideration totaling $77,204. And that brings our year-to-date total to 152,229. We also have five bids on the agenda, and in all cases, the administration is recommending the lowest bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Powell. And we always thank the community for donations and bids. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Ms. Pena and a second by?
Second.
Ms. Mays. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Six trustees, present six trustees, voting affirmative. We've passed the consent agenda. Next, we'll move to discussion item. Dr. Kavasos is planning new and renovated facilities for 2014-15 bond program.
Thank you, President Hogg. And we'd like to give the board an update on where we are with the planning phase for our bond implementation of year one. And Cindy Powell will give us an update on that.
President Hogg, board members, Dr. Kavasos. We are continuing our work in several areas to plan for implementation of the bond program. We are specifically doing work that I've categorized in four different groups, one being construction planning, the other being development of educational specifications. And as we talked about at our last meeting, educational specifications is basically the programming, both instructional programming and facility-related programming for a building. You define the programs you want to offer at a building and then determine the kinds of spaces and the relationships of those spaces and size of the spaces that you need to deliver those programs. And you ultimately turn all that over to the architect for them to design the building. So our work is continuing in that area. Also, program design and transition planning, more the logistics of the people and the students and the staff as they, as we plan to move into new facilities. In terms of construction planning, we have issued an RFQ for construction managers. That process or that posting has closed. We received 25 submissions, and there's a group of administrators that we have completed our screening, our paper, individual paper screenings of those submissions to identify the ones that, or rank them all. We ultimately, by Monday or Tuesday, will identify the ones that we want to bring in and interview, and then move to the second phase. This is a two-step process. We make a selection to pare down the group for interviews based on qualifications. We request pricing now is the next step. And so they'll give us that pricing. So as they come in to do their interviews, we'll know what they're considering as pricing, potential pricing for the projects that we've associated them with at this point. We also are still working on hiring the positions that have been approved to oversee the bond program. We have offers outstanding for several of the project manager positions and the communication specialist position. The MAPS database specialist, that posting has closed. We're scheduling those interviews. And then the budget specialist, we are reposting that position to make sure to get a broader look for qualified candidates there. Our work with DeYoung Richter is continuing. That's the firm that we've contracted with to facilitate the development of educational specifications. In the fall, they're working with us on three of the projects in particular. The Workman Junior High Edition, Dual Language Fine Arts Academies, and the Career Tech Center. In the fall semester, I'm sorry, in the spring semester, they'll also help us with developing educational specifications for the Fine Arts Center and the Athletics Complex. So with the educational specifications, these are key points that we've shared with the committees that are beginning to work on these educational specifications. It's the objective that our educational specifications align with our strategic plan. They focus on the learners in these different spaces and respond to the community's expectations for those learners. And you'll see that in just a moment. Also, it's the expectation that those ed specs will facilitate the pedagogy and curriculum of the district and create opportunities for community partnerships in learning. And that they focus on the whole student, the academic, social, physical, and cultural. So that planning work has begun. DeYoung Richter refers to these as planning labs. And so in particular, on the Workman Project, where we will consolidate the student bodies of Hutchison and Workman into a single building, the items that you see here that are in italics and bold print, those meetings have already occurred. We've had a, we've had a round of staff interviews to solicit input from teachers and district staff people on the buildings and what we need to consider as we move forward. We had a two-day session with a group of stakeholders. It was a planning lab. And we held that on the 23rd and 24th. And then just Tuesday this week, we had community meetings. And we still have another two-day session to go and report to the board. So at that first planning lab, there were a total of 51 people involved in that. And we opened that up to the public. We had teachers, we had administrators, we had parents in that planning lab, we had students. We had two students from Hutch and two from Workman who participated with us. And so out of the first two days, those committee members developed a vision statement for that combined facility. And as you see here, the statement is that Workman will be a learning hub for our students, families, and community with multiple avenues for our students to connect to defined learning pathways, their teachers, and professionals in the local community. So that vision statement is now driving the more specific parts of their work. Also, out of that first two-day session, we had small group exercises. And out of those exercises emerged five very common themes, and they're listed here. Maximize the existing resources and increase access to innovative resources, rich experiences, and talented personnel. A need for flexible learning spaces in the building. Individualized student learning pathways for students at all levels of proficiencies and wherever they are in their academic learning process. And then integrated student and family support and education. There was a very strong desire to have a strong family and community component in that facility where there could be a welcome center, if you will, a one-stop place for families to come to take care of business at the school and to engage and interact with the instructional process. And then also an integrated curriculum, both within the school and then also between the school and local businesses and universities. So out of that, then, become some themes that we see emerge for program offerings, including STEM offerings or science, technology, engineering, and math, fine arts, and business and industry. So we've taken the information gathered from the first two-day planning lab. We've now had a community meeting. We had one Tuesday evening at Workman. We had another one Tuesday evening at Hutchison, where parents could come and community members could come and offer input on our planning work. In those meetings, our consultants led the discussion. They gave an overview of the work that had been done in those themes that we just spoke about a moment ago. There were then questionnaires for the participants there to fill out individually at their tables in small group discussions. And individuals had the opportunity to submit written questions. There are a couple of samples of questions on here. And then the facilitators, along with the administrators who were there, answered the questions for the group, the entire group. DeYoung Richter took input very specifically on that integrated learning and on the family and community engagement pieces. Also, there were questions about what other things should we, the district, consider as we designed these buildings? And what other things do we need to consider, or what other, what other things do we need to consider in terms of program offerings? And then finally, the last question was, what other questions do you have about that transition process? So that information is being compiled now. That was Tuesday night. They'll compile that for us and then have that information available when we have that second two-day planning lab with the group. And so it was very interesting. At Hutchison, our consultant, who is fluent in Spanish, and he had to do the entire presentation, both in Spanish and in English. And so it was very interesting, very engaging, wonderful questions, both locations. And so this is very helpful to us as we work through this planning process. The Dual Language Fine Arts Academy, there's a very similar process going on with that, for that structure. And so there's a whole separate committee of people, another planning lab process. And we've had staff interviews so far. We've had one of the, one day of the first planning lab. That should be a two-day process. First day was October 2nd. And that afternoon, as we were dismissing, was when the storm hit. And so the second day was supposed to be that Friday, the 3rd, and we had to cancel that. That second day is rescheduled for tomorrow. And so we'll have the second day of that lab. And out of that, there will be some more visioning exercises take place, including one that is a week in the life of an academy student or a week in the life of an academy instructor. And they're actually going to break the big group, there are about 50 people, 49, in this, this planning lab into three groups. One that will do the day, or the week in the life of a student, the week in the life of a teacher, the week in the life of administrator, I believe, is what they finally landed on. So visioning to kind of begin people thinking about the program offerings and the flow of the building and what, what sort of physical things we need to think about in the buildings. We've also invited industry experts to help us with this process. Individuals from the Clyburn, Kimball Art Museum, Amen Carter Museum of Art, Casa Minana, UTA, and UNT have all been very gracious in agreeing to share their expertise with us. We're going to have an opportunity tomorrow for those people to meet with the architects for the building. And we'll, I'm sure, provide additional opportunity to help meet their schedules. But we're very much appreciative of the time that they're taking to help share their thoughts with us as we design this very unique place. Our curriculum department has also been working on this planning process. They've made some site visits, several site visits, to look at other dual-language programs, fine arts programs. And they've asked a ton of questions about the program design itself, the administration of the program, application processes for admission to the program. So all of this is helping to inform these planning decisions as we move along through the fall. The career tech planning process is probably the, not, is quite as far along in the schedule. It's all scheduled out to be complete, as you can see here, by the middle of January. The meeting we've had to date is a workforce meeting where we invited some guests in. We had individuals from Interlink, from the Chamber of Commerce, from both Arlington and Fort Worth. We had workforce development folks there with us to just share their insight on workforce trends, industry trends. And then that information will help our staff as we begin to shape possible program offerings at the center. And so you can see here that we have a survey that's available right now to our students. Our, DeYoung Richter, our consultants, actually helped us develop a very brief online survey. Students are taking that at their campuses in the computer labs. And so we'll have that data compiled and available to us when we began the, as we go through the planning lab process. Once we get to that planning lab number one, we'll have the data back from that student surveys. And that is additional data that will help inform our planning. We also have visits planned to the Mansfield ISD Career Tech Center and Eagle Mountain Saginaw ISD Career Tech Centers for both staff and teachers and some, we have some administrators who are going as well. So that work is taking place in the next week or two. In terms of program design, we are in-house. We're working with the architects to, who have been selected to design the multipurpose activity centers. It's Huckabee. They have conducted 220 interviews of coaches. They went to every one of our six high schools. They talked to the coaches, they talked to the fine arts folks, the drill team folks, and they've taken information from them on what they need in those activity centers. That information is being compiled now, and we're beginning to cull through that information and help us, again, determine what the needs are so that we can then determine what the building footprints and need to look like. Terms of the logistical piece of this, the transition planning, we've started on staff transition process. We've had some meetings of senior staff to determine how that process should flow. We will have a steering committee of folks out of HR and administration to draft parameters for that transition process. And then we'll bring in teachers and other staff people from the affected schools and let them view those draft parameters and give their input. And then ultimately, we'll make tweaks and bring forward a final document on that by winter break. This board appointed a citizens' bond oversight committee to oversee the progress, monitor the progress of the 2014 bond program. And we've had our first meeting with them. On October 7th, we had an orientation meeting with them. It's an excellent group. They ask wonderful questions. And we've mapped out the meeting dates now for the next 12 months. And they're very engaged, and we're ready to go with them. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Powell. Wonderful presentation, very detailed and very aggressive.
We have a lot to do.
Very aggressive timeline. I think it covers majority of where we need to go. And I know the board's figuring out ways that we can get you feedback to make it even easier from that side to assist with this process. Any questions from colleagues? Ms. Powell, I don't see any. Thank you for all the hard work you and all the staff's doing. Hopefully, we can give you a couple minutes back with fewer questions. If you can figure out the time to work on that. Thanks, Ms. Powell.
Alright, thanks.
Next, we'll move to open forum for non-agenda items. We don't have any cards, so we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Hogg. And I'd like to share some information about our district. First, I'd like to, once again, because we haven't had a board meeting, once again, congratulate our AISD school board for being named 2014 Outstanding Board of Texas. And that was our picture of when we were at the conference. And this means a lot to our district. Must realize that it means so much for us in the work that we do in carrying out the vision of this board. I'm going to save a lot of the comments for a community reception that we're going to have in November. We're still working on the exact date, but it'll be in November where the association will actually come and present the plaque to the board. And we'll invite the community to congratulate you. But because we haven't had a board meeting, congratulations one more time for being the State of Texas Outstanding Board of the Year, and it's well-deserved and well-earned recognition. Next, we had several open houses, Blanton, Knox, and Rankin Elementaries for their additions. We had renovations and expansion of space, combined nearly $16 million worth of work that includes 38,000-plus square feet in addition. It was very nice, turned out really nice, and had a great open houses at each one of those locations. I'd like to thank the community and our support that we receive from the Arlington Police Department. As an example, they donated 1,500 books that they collected from the community to kick off the National Night Out celebration. Also, Williams Sonoma made a very generous donation of 400 backpacks and lunchboxes and some school supplies to the district. The Pantego Police Department donated 500 school supply items worth over $1,000 to Swift Elementary. thousand dollars to Swift Elementary. Again, the generosity of our community is very much appreciated, and it's focused on helping our students be successful. About two-hundred-and-fifteen community members, teachers, and staff participated, you may recognize some of those people up there, participated in Operation: Graduation to encourage our students who had not yet enrolled back in school to come and enroll. We made over a hundred contacts were made at different locations, at homes, and we encouraged students to come back, talk to their parents, had a lot of very good conversation with parents and students about coming back to school. Pope Elementary had a very special ceremony at its school in September, where the Dad's Club member, Staff Sergeant Frank Martinez, and you see him there, was awarded the Military Outstanding Volunteer Service Medal. This award is given to members of the Armed Forces who perform outstanding volunteer community service of a sustained and direct and consequential nature. And Pope is fortunate to have such an engaged group of parents and Dad's Clubs and things like that, and that they'll do anything for Pope and the students. And so, congratulations to the Staff Sergeant Martinez for his service, not only to AISD and Pope, but to our country. Next, Beth Anderson, and you may know Beth Anderson, many of you do. The school namesake for Anderson Elementary was one of fifteen women honored at the Safe Haven of Tarrant County Twenty-Second Annual Legacy of Women Awards, and you see her there. She was recognized for her outstanding achievement in education, a well-deserved honor for Ms. Beth Anderson. If you see her, congratulate her. I'm sure you have, you don't, when you run into her. October 6th, young junior high students were, filled their two gymnasiums for a game of Healthy Feud with the Dallas Cowboys rookies, and you see them, some of them there. They're the rookies, so they may not be the ones that are easily recognized, but they're very energetic. And it's part of our Fuel Up to Play 60 program that encourages students to eat healthy and get at least sixty minutes of physical activity. The students and the Dallas Cowboys players had a lot of fun, and they paired off in a friendly competition at Young Junior High. So we appreciate the support from the Dallas Cowboys in this effort. Recently, Sam Houston High School Principal Fernando Benavides attended Great Minds in STEM Education. It's a Hispanic Engineering National Achievement Awards Conference, and it's a part of a partnership that General Motors Foundation and Sam Houston High School have started, as very generous offers by General Motors to mentor and assist with Hispanic engineers and Hispanic students to become engineers and scientists. So, great STEM focus there at Sam Houston. Next, I'd like to offer sincere gratitude to our AISD Principals and Assistant Principals, and you see just a sample of them there. They're dressed up for graduation there. As we celebrate Principal Month in Texas, Governor Perry proclaimed October 2014 as Principals' Month, and we know that the contribution of Principals and Assistant Principals is vital for our students to be successful. And so, happy Principal Month for, and Assistant Principal Month for all our Principals. Last, AISD has once again received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting Award from the Association of School Business Officials International, and the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. These awards represent a very significant achievement and reflect AISD's commitment to the highest standards in financial reporting. Tony Drolinger, if you'd come forward, is Executive Director of Finance, to receive these awards. And Mr. Hogg, you'll join me down there to give Tony Drolinger, who enjoys the spotlight, is just, this is his favorite part of the meeting when we call him up. But we really thank you, Tony, and all the Finance Department for the outstanding work you do every single day. And so, we're going to come and give you those awards.
I thought for financial care, they should give you money. That's why they don't. Congratulations. Thank you.
I'm gonna say a word. You know, if you called me all the way down here, I'm gonna say something.
First of all, I do want to say, this is not my award. I say this every year. This is a testament of the integrity and the hard work that every one of the staff members in the business office really exhibit and put out every single day. And so, that's what these awards prove. Furthermore, though, it also, I want to thank you all, this body here, because the integrity from the top is what's important. And we know that when we make a decision based on integrity and based on what's right, even though it may not be a popular decision, we're going to be backed by y'all. And so, that's your role in this. So for that, thank you as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. President Hogg, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. And Mr. Drolinger, on behalf of the board, congratulations to you and your entire department. One of the top jobs as a trustee is fiscal responsibility, and you make that job much easier for us. Thank you. At this time, we'll do school board reports. Ms. Mays?
Okay. It has been a while, so I'll just go through a little list and make a comment of a few things. I did have the opportunity to attend open house for the new improvements at Blanton, Knox, and Rankin. And I think the biggest thing that I bring back from that is the kids saying, "Look at my school." And that's exactly what we want the students and the teachers to feel, that the schools are theirs because they are. Operation: Graduation, always a huge event. My big takeaway there is seeing the students' face say, "I didn't know that's all I had to do." Love that. Also, had the opportunity to attend the NAACP Town Hall meeting that was held at UT Arlington. We had local pastors there, the Arlington Chief of Police, other community political individuals that were there to talk about the issues that had happened in Ferguson and how prepared we are in this area to happen. And I was just interested in being there to hear what they were saying because it's our community. So, anything that happens, it's stretching out to the students that we are actually serving here. So, very glad to see the community pull together in that discussion. Also, National Night Out, had an opportunity to attend at Beacon Hill, which is the area for West and Barnett. Loved seeing the kids running around and enjoying the fire trucks and the ambulance. And once again, this is where I live, and I go to school with this child and this child. So, once again, just, I love our community. I really do. Had the opportunity to attend the Mount Olive Prayer Lunch, which I thought was very nice because it had invitation for a lot of the elected officials to just take time out to say, "Hey, we're praying for you. We're praying for all your constituents, the people that you serve." And for me, that's meaningful. And then, also had opportunity, for the first time, to see the Dean Corey marching band at UT Arlington, and that was quite a treat. We talk about the fine arts and so forth, but man, our students are so talented. And to see all of them out there in the field, particularly the junior high mixing in with the high school, and then with the UT Arlington band, was just, they were just all so excited. So, once again, I'm just so honored to be able to be a part of this great community.
Very well said, Ms. Mays. Anyone else? Yeah, sure. I'm all for it. Mr. Hibbs, do we have any items to address tonight?
We have two. Mr. Barron asked that when the slides are brought back for the rezoning that we add capacity for the schools. And then, the second request was from Ms. Sullins, and it was concerning, concerning the campus improvement plans that notify board when the CPI periodic formative reviews are final and ready to be viewed.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. With that, we have one final item on the agenda for this evening. We will be having a Level III impersonal grievance hearing of Ms. Mary Wilson. We will take about a, we'll come back at nine oh five so people can get moved into the section. We will start an open and then move into closed session. The next item on the agenda, at nine oh nine, we'll call back in. Next item on the agenda is to consider the employee grievance of Mary Wilson. We will now adjourn into closed session pursuant to Sections 551.074 of the Texas Open Meetings Act. 551.074 provides that meeting may be closed for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. I ask that everyone who is not a part of this hearing or who is not going to participate in this hearing to now exit the boardroom. I thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, ladies.
Nine forty-six, we return for the evening. We will go into open session at nine forty-six. Michelle, would you please open doors? Is there anyone in the hall, Mr. Hill? Perfect. Thank you. At this time, I'll take a motion from one of my colleagues.
Thank you, President Hogg. I'd like to make a motion to affirm the administration's decision.
Perfect. Thank you, Ms. Sullins. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Sullins to affirm the administration's decision, and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Please vote. Six trustees present voting the affirmative to affirm the decision. Thank you both for the time this evening. At nine forty-seven, we are adjourned.